To order, meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58, Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bogart, would you read our community prayers?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts.
Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, discussion of possible vote of the Comcast contract renewal. We have Mr. Clark here from the Cable Board and Attorney Hewig, is that correct?
That's correct.
You folks would like to step up to the microphone? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, are these multiple copies?
Yes.
You gave me here, okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having us in this evening. This has been a long, somewhat torturous process. We began this back in 2019 when the original contract, 10-year contract, was supposed to expire. And for a variety of reasons, and Attorney Hewig can testify that over time, the last few years, not just Comcast, but a lot of cable companies have sort of been dragging their feet on contract renewals, a variety of reasons for it. We're moving forward into a constantly changing cable world. There are people that feel 10, 15 years from now, all cable, we're just coming down from satellite, you won't need wired towns anymore. So there's a lot of caution that's being exercised before executing a new contract. The advisory committee was composed of, in addition to me, Dan Ginnity, Jay John, Pat Maher, Albert Winters, and Steve Mahoney, who, as you know, is the school IT, or actually the town IT officer. And ex-officio was Rich Goulart, who was involved in all the negotiations. And our KP Law Cable Council is Attorney William Hewig, who's joining us here tonight along with Rich Goulart, who is the Executive Director for the Cable Studio. The contract with Comcast was set to expire on October 19th, 2019. The committee began meetings in 2019 in anticipation of the renewal. We sent surveys out to all the Comcast subscribers in Carver and held a public hearing on September 9th, 2019. Negotiations with Comcast moved slowly, and the pandemic slowed the process even more. The terms of the previous 10-year contract were in place during this time. After speaking with other towns, the expiration of the 10-year contract and the slow process of negotiations was typical of Comcast and other cable systems and was not unique to our situation. We contacted other cable systems at the start of the process to see if they had any interest in coming into Carver to compete with Comcast. We've done this prior, prior to other negotiations, and no town has been interested in coming in. No cable system was interested in coming in, and the main reason cited is the size of the town of Carver and the relatively low number of subscribers. The feeling is that investing in the infrastructure was cost prohibitive based on the anticipated return in revenue. We contacted RCN, Verizon, FiOS, and of course Dish and Director out there as individual options for people. During negotiations, the committee requested an increase in operating expenses from 4.5% to 5%, $500,000 in a capital grant, and to have our three public access channels, 13, 14, and 15, converted to an HD format. Executive Director Rich Goulart created a compelling presentation for the need for $500,000 in capital funding over the 10-year period, based on the need to upgrade a constantly changing technology in order to meet the future needs of the community. Included in this was the need to have the ability to broadcast from anywhere without being hardwired to the Internet. This is an ability we expect to have in place in the very near future. After negotiation, Comcast agreed to increasing operating expenses to 5.5, a $200,000 capital grant, and one channel converted to HD. The plan is for that channel to be the government channel that most of the town meetings are shown on. The committee, advised by Attorney Hewig, was aware that we had asked for a lot, and after exchanging several counteroffers, were ultimately satisfied with the Comcast offer and voted to recommend it to the Select Board unanimously. The $200,000 grant, while not what was requested, was a real win for the town, as we had not received a capital grant in the previous contract, and Comcast has not been awarding significant capital grants in negotiations with other towns. With that, I'll ask Attorney Hewig to walk you through the highlights of the new proposed 10-year contract.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen and members of the public. The cable license that we've negotiated and that is being proposed to you tonight will be a 10-year license term. That term is proposed. The term may be anywhere from three to 10 years. I always recommend a 10-year renewal because that will lock in place financial benefits for public access for the longest possible period of time. I also recommend it because the conventional wisdom is that cable companies will become less and less generous going into the future with things such as public access in view of the fact that cable television subscribers are cutting the cord and cable revenues are expected to go down. So the 10-year term would be recommended. It will begin, it would begin January 1 of 2022, so when you sign it, the cable license will be backdated to January 1 of this year. It'll go all the way through to December 31st of 2032, 10-year term. The standard provisions for licenses, for protections for the community in the form of bonds and insurance are included in the license. The state law requires insurance in the amount of $100,000, $300,000. For many years, cable licenses have had a lot more than that, and ours has a standard provision of $1 million, comprehensive general liability policy of $5 million, umbrella policy, and standard provisions for the provision of workers' comp insurance and automobile liability insurance for the cable company's motor vehicles as they go out town doing their business. Those provisions are included in Section 9 of the license. The service area will be a service area which is standard for communities of this size. It'll be 30 dwellings per aerial mile and 60 dwellings per underground mile and 150-foot setback. Those are called setback and density obligations. The same as in the current license. So that means that if you have a road with 30 dwellings on it or more within a mile that's not cable, the cable operator will be obligated to come in and cable that road and try to sell subscriptions. That's found in Section 3.1. As Mr. Clark said earlier, the access provisions are 5% gross annual revenues payable quarterly in March, July, October, and December, and a $200,000 capital grant over 10 years, divided up annually into $20,000 a year annual capital grant payments. And as Mr. Clark said, that is a major win for the town because before we had no capital grants whatsoever. So the purpose of capital grants, of course, is to permit the cable operator to be able to upgrade equipment and to provide state-of-the-art equipment and state-of-the-art presentations so that the access users and subscribers in town will get the highest possible quality pictures and the highest possible quality technology and the equipment that's delivering the video signal to them. There are standard customer service requirements in the license, and the license obligates the FCC's customer service obligations. And those obligations provide, for example, that the cable operator must answer the telephone within 30 seconds 90% of the time for, under ordinary circumstances, and that when answering the phone, it must be a live person and not a phone tree that just directs you off to some other waiting line where you wait in line for a certain period of time. Cable operators have computers that track those sorts of responses, and that information is available upon request. The failure to comply with FCC customer service standards in the license may subject the cable operator to liquidated damages, which are a form of penalties, and I'll get to that at the end of my presentation. As I mentioned, Peg Access Support, 5% gross annual revenues and $200,000 in 10, $20,000 a year payments. And the final item I'll touch on is the liquidated damages. Liquidated damages are a form of penalties for failure to comply with the cable television licenses provisions. There are seven or eight main provisions of a license identified in Section 9.9. And if the cable operator is not in compliance with those, and they include the main areas where you would expect to get complaints for noncompliance. Failure to cable, provide cable service to somebody on a street where they're supposed to have it. Failure to meet customer service standards. Failure to meet the signal quality standards of the FCC. Failure to pay the town's money on time, the access support provisions. So those are the types of provisions, the areas where issuing authorities, boards such as yourself, most frequently get complaints. And in those areas, the enforcement mechanism we have is that if there is a complaint given to the Board of Noncompliance, the Board will send a letter to the cable company and say, "We believe you're not in compliance with Section something or other. You have 30 days to present us with reasons why you are or explanations why you're not, and give us a plan for cure." If the cable operator's not able to do that, then the issuing authority can invoke liquidated damages, which are penalties of a certain amount of money per day. $50 a day, $100 a day, something like that. Those work. That is the only enforcement mechanism that Boards of Selectmen have for a cable operator that I've ever seen that has any muscle at all. So the town is well protected by this license. Its customers are well protected, and the license provides what Mr. Clark and I and the cable negotiators believe will be a generous amount of funding to guarantee and ensure high-quality, public-access cable casting for residents of Carver over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goulart, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the one thing that I don't believe Bill touched on at the end, there was the addition of the HD channel. And it's become standard for, in all of the negotiations, that towns are getting one at this point. And we do have a provision, did we discuss that and get it put in, where if there is a move to more, we'd have that grandfathered in?
To provide additional, yes.
An additional one if they begin doing that as well.
That'll be a sideline.
So far, they haven't been doing that, but they have agreed to the one. And I believe we were in the ending factor where, in many cases now, they're taking one of the standard channels away and giving one HD channel. We're maintaining the three with the HD channel as an additional channel, which will make a lot of the problems that we've had from this location go away because just the signal coming in that much better.
Does that include some of the audio issues that have been sometimes helped?
Yes, yep, it will because anything that we're kicking out on that higher level is going to be able to come back through Comcast at a higher level. We're also looking at additional means of playback, which may eliminate what we currently have as a pretty old system where we're using modulators, where the system comes from here, goes into our modulator, gets decoded back out to Comcast, and then is sent out among the channels. Instead, what we're looking at is possibly a virtual, a digital version of that, where we would not need all of that. We'd have an encoder and they'd have the decoder, but it would take out a lot of the lines aspects. Wouldn't use the lines in the same way as it does now, which, considering the lines are X number of years old, would be a positive improvement as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, gentlemen? Questions on the Board? Ms. Bell?
All right. I'll start off with my first bit. Thank you very much for doing the work. I appreciate it very much. I have a ton of questions. The first one here being is that I don't see anything in this contract that limits or provides any financial benefit or reduction of pay for senior citizens, which we have a high population in our town, and low-income people. I don't see anything in there that says that basic cable is this price. There isn't. There's nothing in here. And it actually just says that they'll provide basic cable service. But I think that's a big thing with our town, where you have people that are on limited incomes, and there is no fixed rate here. Kind of goes along with that is that all these things you said about the 5%, which we have 3,300 subscribers, it's 50 cents per subscriber, which is $1,650, which one person, one person in this town is going to pay that amount for that 50 cents per subscriber because all of these figures that you came up with in this reverts back to the consumer, meaning our residents are going to pay for all of this that's in this contract, everything. All right? Also, I didn't see, you may have put it in here, but this, the upgrades, the town has to pay $30,000 to Comcast for the upgrades? Did I read that wrong in there?
No, that's correct. That is a standard provision that Comcast offers to any community to which it will make an HD channel available, and it's capped at 30,000. You won't find anything different in any other community that gets an HD channel. That's standard.
That will be paid for by Area 58, not the town of Carver.
But that's going to come out of what they provide to Area 58 because it says the town of Carver is going to pay that 30,000 in the contract.
Attorney Hewig, I believe that Area 58 anticipates making that payment.
Yes, our understanding is that the access folks will be paying that rather than the town.
Okay. Make sure, because like I said, it just sounds, it sounded bizarre that they're going to give us money from our residents, all right, that we got to pay for services.
It is bizarre, and that's just the way these things are done. I agree with you. It's bizarre.
Like I said, I mean, I read this. It just, I understand your point, but I have to look at it the sense of the residents. And also, my big thing here is that, and you've done it well trying to find someone else to come in, but nobody's going to come in for those reasons that you stated. No other cable companies. So basically, it's a monopoly for Comcast to be here, all right, that says, hey, we're going to give you this, all right, and $100,000, I mean, $200,000 for 10 years? Well, 10 of our residents that pay $200 a year is going to pay that 20,000. So think of the 3,300 residents, all right, that are going ahead and taking this service. When we take 10 of those out per year, I mean, think about that. The profit margin on this is high. It really is. I mean, when you really break it down.
How many residents do you say?
Excuse me? It says, it says here, you said there's about 3,300 subscribers.
Correct. And we'll get $200,000 over a 10-year period, $20,000 a year.
Right, but it also says you're going to get 50 cents per subscriber in this contract.
You have talked about the increase of 4.5% to 5%?
No, those are two different things.
Two different things.
There's a so-called license fee, which is a state 50 cents per sub, or per head per subscriber, paid every year, goes to the town. And then there's the franchise fee, which is a $200,000 and a 4.5. It's two different things.
Two different, like I said, I mean, that's, that's not even one resident paying that out of ours. So...
But this is, just so you know, this has been, this has been since 1992. This has been the way these contracts are done. This is not brand new.
Right, but I'm a selectman now here, and I'm representing the residents.
Understood.
Okay. And by representing the residents, I'm making sure that they understand that this contract only deals with cable, doesn't do anything about Internet at all. Okay? So Internets are free-for-all. Why that wasn't included in this, I don't know because I would have turned around and done that and said, hey, Comcast, their bill comes out, you get Internet, you get cable, it's all one bill. Well, we should be doing something for that.
I'll let Attorney Hewig reply to that because that gets complicated and it becomes a question of what a town has the ability to negotiate with a cable company for.
The quick and short answer to that is that the FCC and Congress have both said that cable licenses are for cable TV only. They're not for telephone, they're not for Internet or broadband, even though, as we all know, the signal goes over the same wire that you get, that you're granting the cable operator the right to string over public ways. It's an anomaly. I agree with you. It's completely crazy. But the law is, and the FCC rulings and court rulings are, that this license is cable only. And that's, we have to abide by the law. We don't have any other choice.
But you can negotiate anything in a contract, okay? Granted the cable, you can actually go to them and say, hey, listen, all right, we want to do something with Internet, okay? Doesn't have to be part of this contract, but guess what? We can put an addendum to it to say, hey, all right, on a side note, Internet is going to be limited to this, this, or this, okay? And provide services. I think that something has to be done because when you start talking about a bill of $300 for cable, Internet, and phone, some people can't afford that, all right? And right now, you need to have Internet, all right, to do anything within business, even home, or school, or kids, or anything like that.
I couldn't agree with you more. I just think it's crazy that the two aren't connected. But we have never been able to get, you know, in order to negotiate something, it takes two sides, two willing sides to sit down and talk about an agreement or a contract. You've got one willing side, willing to sit down and talk about a contract or an agreement for broadband, and that's our side. The cable companies won't even talk to you. They say, we don't have to, it's not legal, it's not part of cable, we're not talking to you. And that's been the case for 20 years. So while I couldn't agree with you more that it ought to be the other way, it just ain't that way right now. And maybe sometime in the future it will be, but right now, our hands are tied.
Okay.
I can address a couple of your other questions.
Go ahead.
Before, if you want, or I can wait till the end. The senior citizen discount is available by side letter, but it's not compulsory. That is, it's voluntary on the part of the cable company. They'll give us a side letter, and they'll say, we will give you a 5% discount to seniors for basic service, but it's means-tested. And that's all we will get out of Comcast, and that's all you'll get out of any cable operator in the Commonwealth, and it's been that way for 30 years. So we can get that from Comcast. The cost of providing the service, the $200,000 that we've negotiated, when you divide it out by $20,000 a year and divide that by the number of subscribers and the number of months, it works out to 50 cents per subscriber per month over 10 years. So that's how much the subscribers will be paid, will be paying to the cable operator in their fees. That's how much more they'll be paying, 50 cents more a month. Now, that's, the cable operator, the cable committee and your negotiator saw that was very reasonable increase in cable monthly fees for subscribers in the town of Carver considering the $200,000 benefit you're getting. So it will cost them, you're correct, it will cost subscribers more, but in the overall scheme of things, 50 cents per subscriber is way down on the lower end of what many communities do pay. It's not uncommon to find increases of a dollar, $1.50, or even more. So 50 cents was reasonable, and it was for that reason that Comcast did not agree to give us the 400,000 we wanted because the pass-through costs for subscribers were going to be too high. So it's a balancing act, you know? What is the most amount of money you can get to benefit the town and the subscribers, and what is the least amount of pass-through and impact, financial impact, you can have on the subscriber? So that's how we arrived at that number.
But Comcast also, and this is one of the other things I'm frustrated because I sent an email to, for Comcast, say, hey, you going to come to this meeting? I'd like to, I'd like to hear, and he had another obligation tonight, which who knows if that's true or not, but I'd like them to sit here and explain this. To be totally honest, before I do anything with this, I want them in here. I want them to answer some questions, like I'm doing you. You guys shouldn't be, you guys are for us, okay? Why are you coming with a contract here? It should be both, two sides who'd come in, but it's only a one-sided discussion here. And you're taking the blunt of mine, and I'm sorry, but we're all here to do a job, and I'm here to represent residents, okay? And I'm here to question. And that's what I'm doing. The pass-through money, I think, it shouldn't be passful. It's going to do it anyways because that's part of this, but they just increased everyone's fees. They just did it. So we're going to sign this, and they're going to increase it again, coming in again. It's like, what the heck, man? I just, I can't, there has to be a means within this contract to offer residents a set price. If we're going to do a 10-year contract, this is a long contract. 10 years is long for this. There should be some other benefit within this town, not just the Cable Access Channel, okay? But to the residents, say, we're locking in a rate for basic cable of $10 for 10 years. There has to be something like that, all right? Because all I see, this is, this is something the Cable Access Channel said, here you go, and that's it. That's all we're going to get, and we have no choice to say, oh, sure, we'll take it. Well, I'm not going to take it.
Can I, can I address that, sir?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to be an apologist for the cable operator, but if they were here, here's what you'd hear from them. They would say that their rates go up when the programmers who supply them with programming increase the rates for programming. Now, there's a profit margin in there too, but I've been doing this for over 30 years, and I tend to believe that that's correct. And the other thing they would tell you is that they would not be able to agree to lock in a rate for 10 years because they don't know what their own costs will be in three, four, or five, or six years. They're entitled to make a profit. And the whole idea behind the scheme set up by Congress in 1983, under which cable operators were allowed to operate, was they're supposed to end up being competition. It's supposed to be a market, and the market is supposed to determine things like cable rates and that sort of thing. And even though there's not a competitor in town, there is satellite, and there's Dish, and there's these streaming services, and they are becoming the effective competitor for cable operators. And if the cable operator's rates go too high, more people are just going to keep bailing. So in a sense, you do have competition trying to keep cable rates down, but I agree with you. I don't like my rates any more than anybody in this room does either. So I agree with you about that. But that's what the cable people would tell you if they were here, and I tend to think there's some truth to it, quite frankly.
Well, the basic service rate is you get basic cable, but the channels keep on decreasing. So how can you turn around and say that, like I said, this is just a cable thing, that they should be here to say this and says, okay, we provide you basic cable, get Channel 5, 25, 10, all right, up to New Hampshire channels too, that you say, okay, fine, but then 10 minutes down, you got 20 other channels here, when you used to have 40 channels, but you're paying more, you're getting less channels, all right, and just for basic cable. It just, it's not, it doesn't seem right for the residents, okay? I'm going to move on. Next one is the...
If I could just...
Yes, sir.
...that a little bit. We had a very good representation of the people that were on the Carver Cable Advisory Board, and they did the job that you're representing should have been done and asked all these questions. And Attorney Hewig, in our meetings with Michael Gala, from the representative from Comcast, we went, we went through all of this. We asked for all of this, and I just, I don't want to disrespect the members of the committee because I get the sense you're... get the sense you're suggesting that we didn't do our job and didn't ask the right questions, and that if you had them before you, you'd be able to convince them to come up with a, a rate. I don't think there's a cable contract in the state, is there, that sets the rates for the, for, for, that, that a cable system, be it FiOS, RCN, Comcast, is willing to do?
That's correct, Mr. Clark. Until just recently, cable rates re-regulated by the Commonwealth itself, or they were unregulated because there was effective competition within the community. So municipalities have never been able to regulate cable rates by putting in the license, and they still can't do it. They don't have the legal power to do that.
All right. So the next part is the performance bond, $25,000 for the performance bond. I, I find that quite low, knowing that if Comcast left the town, they're supposed to take all the wires out with them, the way it says in the contract, okay? That if they don't, $25,000 to remove every wire that's in here in the state, I mean, in, in the town here of Carver, I just, I think that's super low for a performance bond, for the amount of infrastructure that they have here in town. The complaint thing, I've called them and been on hold, hold, hold. So this 30-second rule, nah, I, I, there's many people. So know what, people, when you call Comcast, you call us if they spend more than 30 seconds, so we can turn around and get them. The next thing is with those fees, those fees for fines or whatever, I mean, I think they're low, and they're low for a reason, because they, they can handle a couple of thousand dollars a year if we start enforcing those fees. The other thing I had was, uh, went through that, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought, my wonderful notes. Know what, I'm gonna let someone else take over, I'm kinda.
Bogart, do you have anything?
Um, well, Bob kind of opened my eyes to things, but let me just ask, the $200,000 capital grant, is that an automatic increase to people's bill? Are they gonna get the little addendum that says, starting next month, your local whatever fee is going to increase by, you know, because the slow, regional sports thing keeps going up? Is that gonna be an automatic increase, or is it just kind of like a hypothetical, it makes sense increase, like we're talking?
It'll, it'll be, the, the subscribers will see it on their bill. I'm not sure what the lag time is between when the license gets signed and when the fees are added, but it will be added, yes.
So it is like a 100%, you use the term pass-through. It's the pass-through fee, you use that term? Because see, when I read this initially, and you were saying that we got a grant, I was so excited, like, this is great, a $200,000 grant? But in hearing that it's an automatic pass-through to the consumer, it's kind of like asking the subscribers to just give us extra money. So I kind of changed my mind on that part. I thought it was great, but knowing that the 3,300 people will just be paying, in essence, the town, I almost wish we didn't have that, knowing that 3,300 people are just gonna have to pick it up a little bit at a time.
May, may I address that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? You're right, the subscribers pay. That's just the, the structure and the regime of the Federal Cable Act of 1983, that, that's the way it was set up. This, and here's how to think of it. Congress recognized in 1983 that cable companies were starting off and could be, for a long time, a monopoly, all right? So they said, okay, we're gonna let municipalities or issuing authorities grant a cable monopoly, because we think it's a good thing that cable TV gets to go into communities, that's a good thing. And we'd like to promote access, and so therefore, we are gonna obligate cable operators, in exchange for getting a monopoly, to be obligated to pay money to support local access in the communities. Your telephone company doesn't do that, for example, other utilities don't do it, the gas doesn't do it, you know? Cable TV is obligated to do it. So it's, it's different in that sense. But the subscribers do pay for it in the form of pass-through costs, but they pay for it, it gets spread out among all the subscribers. The amount they pay is relatively innocuous, 50 cents a month, is 50 cents a month, I know, but it's not a lot. It's not $10 a month, or $50 a month, it's, it's a relatively small amount, and that's just the way the law has been since 1983. It's almost 40 years now. And every cable license in the country is like this, every issuing authority in the country has the same questions you folks do, they're all great questions, and, and the public has got the same questions. The answer is, that's the law. And, and that's the way cable licenses have been negotiated and entered into and granted for 40 years. So we, we comply with the law, we do what Congress tells us to do, we say, follow what the FCC says, so do the cable companies, you know? We've gotten a $200,000 grant for the community that we think will be really, really beneficial, but there is a cost, yes.
So if there wasn't a grant, those people wouldn't get that extra fee on the bill?
If there's no $200,000, no 50 cents per month.
See, I think I'd be in favor of taking it out, because the grant is basically getting a grant from residents, so it's kind of like another indirect tax. So I would love to see this go back just without the grant. As great as it is, it's, it's different than the grants the fire department gets, and they apply and money comes from outside. So my original thought was, it's great, but I, I think I'd like to see it without the grant, as odd as that sounds.
If I could ask Mr. Goulart, as executive director, to address the issue of why the grant's necessary over the next 10 years?
The grant effectively is, is what we use to buy capital equipment. Without it, I mean, we're already dealing with cameras that are failing, some of them. The technology advances, for us to keep up, we have to have additional money come in. The other thing about the $20,000 is, it's a concrete figure in the sense, in the way in which the franchise fees are not necessarily, because if everyone cut cable this week, we'd get nothing from there and still get the $20,000. So to take that away, takes the one sort of safety net that we have out of it, and it is, again, the first time Carver's been able to get this, and I think it's important because as we are currently situated, the other towns representing in Area 58 do in fact bring capital money to the table the same way. So, I, I think it is going to be vital for us to be able to do some of the upgrades. For instance, the $30,000 to do the HD channel basically is encumbered, or the $20,000 would be part of the, partly encumbered by that. So we sort of rely, we were very excited, I was very excited by the possibility of finally getting some capital money from Carver, because any sort of things we're doing, where we're talking about doing more of the sports coverage and things like that, and we streamed for the first time the Thanksgiving Day game live on the channel this year. All that takes additional equipment that we don't necessarily have access to without having a means of funding it. And we are already, with the current situation of people cutting the cord, we've actually done better than a lot of towns at this point, but we've already had to make serious cuts in almost every area of our budget. We had had six people on staff, we are down to five, and one of them is part-time. We've also cut back on the number of videographers we're using, and instead are having the staff cover some of those to additionally bring back over $10,000 back into the budget annually. So it is, I understand where you're coming from, I live in Carver, so I'm paying it as well. It just is the price you pay for being a star, in essence. In order to have the cable in the, in the town, in order to have the public access center, the money's gotta come from somewhere. The alternative is to have it as a town meeting item, and then you're asking the town to come up with $240,000 a year, separate from everything else, to fund the cable station. So those, those, those are sort of the options. Either we work with the mechanism that's provided through Comcast, or we come up with another way that's not going to be palatable to people either. Thank you.
Anything else with Bogart? Mr. Belvin?
Yeah. Can you explain force majeure in the language, the contract?
Yeah, that's a, a contract, an exception. It says you don't have to comply with a contractually binding agreement if there is an act of God, a hurricane, a tornado, a tsunami, a blizzard, a snowstorm, some exceptional weather event or other event, it could be a terrorist attack, like 9/11, I suppose, that prevents one party from complying with a contract. So for example, if there were a, you know, a hurricane came through and knocked down all the wires, well, you, you couldn't complain to them that they're not providing cable service, because there was force majeure. That's what it means.
So all those, so they could turn around and just say, yeah, it's force majeure, yep, that's why we didn't answer your phone, the call, so we can't, we can't get a, a fee on that, say that, well, cable went out because a tree fell down on it, and therefore, we don't have to pay, because, so I just looked at that as saying, well, there's their get-out-of-free-jail card, they can just say that, an act of God, or whatnot, that they don't have to pay that, because it also says if, they're supposed to prorate any, any outages in this contract, too. So.
You're right, but there has to have been an act of God. I mean, if there hasn't been a tornado, or a hurricane, or a blizzard, or, you know, a tsunami, then they can't claim that as an excuse for not complying.
Yeah.
Could I address a couple other things?
Please, yes.
Points you made, Selectman Belvin, before we go on. You had mentioned the $25,000 bond as being low, and I would say to you that that is fairly standard. Larger municipalities, like cities, tend to have 50,000, some of them like Boston or Cambridge might have 100,000. A community the size of Carver, $25,000 has been fairly standard for a number of years. And you mentioned the, the possibility that Comcast would be shut down and have to remove all their wires, and indeed, that would be covered by the bond, but considering the fact that Comcast is also providing broadband service and telephone service over the same wires, if they decide to shut down the cable business, they're not gonna have to remove their wires. Those wires are there for other purposes as well. And there hasn't really been a case where a cable company has been shut down and thrown out of town, other than once or twice over the last 40 years. So that contingency is rather remote, and my opinion is that the $25,000 is probably gonna be sufficient. It seems to have been sufficient in other communities this size for 20 or 30 years. The complaint, the, the point you made about complaints is an excellent one, and for those of you who are out there who may have had complaints about not getting through, keep a record of it. Write down the, the date and the time, and how long you had to wait, because that could be a compliance issue, okay? If we assemble here, if your cable committee, or the board, or a cable coordinator in town assembles a number of complaints from people who've, who've been put on hold for 25 minutes, then we can do something about that. We can find out whether they were excused or not. It may have been that there was some problem, that there was a, you know, that there may have been a force majeure, there may have been a storm, or wires down, or something like that. But on the other hand, if they aren't, then that's subject to liquidated damages, a liquidated damages claim. The next point you made, sir, was that you thought the liquidated damages figures were low. They look low. $100 a day doesn't look like a lot. But I would say two things. One, it's not the money that gives us the clout, it's the fact that we can hold a public hearing and invite the press to come in, and have the board, who's the issuing authority for a license, tell them they're out of compliance and they're gonna be fined. It's the bad publicity that they fear most. And I'll also tell you that where liquidated damages have, I've seen them invoked, is because it's an, an intractable problem, that they haven't been able to solve for a long period of time, and we ended up getting 30, or 40, or $50,000 out of the cable company. And in every case, that's happened three times in 20 years, every case, the way that was handled was, the board elected to have that money given back to the subscribers, and have the subscribers' bills lowered by 30, or $40,000 over the next year or so. So the numbers look low, indeed, but it's really not about the money. It's about having clout over the cable company and, and being able to give them a bad name and a black eye. They fear that far more than they fear paying money. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Belvin?
There is, but you know what, I've kind of taken up a lot of time, and like I said, I read it a couple of times, just to make sure, all my notes and everything, but like I said, there were more things I had some questions about, but, yeah.
Just a couple of things from me. First of all, Mr. Clark, did the cable advisory committee take a vote on this contract?
Yes, they voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the contract to the select board.
Okay. And just a couple of things, a lot of my questions have been asked already, especially the portion about senior rates and, and rates for people with low income, which I, it sounds like things are sort of, our hands are sort of bound here, but I wish there was a little more, more there. I will add my voice to Mr. Belvin's, that I, too, have sat on hold for a long time with Comcast. So we will certainly bring that to your, to your attention, as I'm sure many people out there, and our, our audience will be. But I guess that's, that's all I have. Is there a, is there a motion here?
If I could just.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Again, this is probably the fourth contract renewal I've been involved with. Many of the questions that came up today have come up in the past, and as Attorney Hewitt has represented, most of it is outside of the scope of the contract. The contract cannot, cannot bind the Comcast to charging a certain price. The best opportunity that a community has to lowering prices for the residents is competition. Right now, Carver is not unique in having only, for a town our size, having only one cable company in town. The alternative, if you decide to not approve the contract, then that's going to hamstring the studio's ability to keep up with technology. Many people in this town pay very close attention to all the government meetings that are televised, which by the way, Area 58 pays for the videographers. It used to be the town had to pay for them, but under the new arrangement, regional arrangement, we're able to cover that by paying all the videographers ourselves. And the equipment is necessary in order to, I mean, we spent over $20,000 to upgrade this facility here, and we've done the same in Halifax.
Twice here, twice, around $25,000 each time.
And so the money is put to use to try to improve the services that the residents of the town of Carver receive, and in particular, they rely very heavily on the ability to witness these government meetings, which is one of the prime functions that the cable serves. We have three channels in town, educational, government, and regular programming, and we're looking forward to the end of the pandemic, when community residents can come in again and learn how to use the equipment and produce their own programs, which is one of the areas of, that really spun, spun out peg access back when it originally was created, was the idea of local programming. So I understand all the concerns that have been expressed, they've been brought up at every contract renewal, and it's, to some extent, the law does tie our hands, and I think, as Attorney Hewitt represented, you can have Comcast come in, but I don't think the answers are gonna be any different. And, you know, I think the cable advisory board committee did the best they could, under the circumstances, with the opportunity, with what opportunity we had. Attorney Hewitt provided this guidance through, all the way through, and to be honest, we got a much better offer from Comcast than we expected to get in the first place. The, the pricing is out of our hands, and the residents, and you can argue whether it's a modest increase or not, but the improvements are necessary for Mr. Goulart to be able to provide the type of quality programming and government channel, and government meetings that, that you're looking for. So I understand the frustrations, they, they come up at every renewal, and I know Attorney Hewitt sees it and hears it from every town. I don't know what the alternative is.
And I, I, just to add, I thought the point that Mr. Goulart made about the, the money coming back to Carver on a yearly basis was important, that that money is guaranteed in the contract while the subscriber fee is, is not. Every day, every day I talk to people who are cutting the cord, it's, it's certainly out there, you don't have to look far, it's all over the internet about people looking for different ways every single day to cut the cord, so.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, the one other thing I'd point out is that $200,000 in the, representing 50 cents per month per subscriber, if that's all that Comcast were to go up over the next 10 years, I think everyone would be pleased with that number.
Certainly would.
So I mean, it's really minimal in comparison, I mean, I know every bit counts, but it, I think it has more impact positive to Area 58 and what we're able to do than it would have an impact on the individual. 58 and what we're able to do than it would have an impact on the individual subscriber. It's $6 a year.
So just for clarity, that grant, all of that money would go to Area 58? It doesn't end up in the town's general fund?
That's correct. It would all come directly to us.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? Anything else from the board? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I kind of would like to put this off until we have our full board sitting here with us and give the opportunity for Comcast to come in here and have one of their representatives here. We waited since 2019 for this, so one more meeting, I don't think, should be an issue. And we request, if you guys could do that, that Comcast representative come in here and at least talk to us.
Mr. Clark, is there a consequence to the town putting this off for a little while?
Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ron, but the probable consequence would be that the January 1 commencement date will be moved forward to February or March. That's the only consequence.
But there's no service issues, nothing?
Nope.
Nothing?
No, no, sir.
Like that? And do you, because obviously, we have two members that weren't here to hear your presentation, Mr. Clark, do you think it's possible you could reach out to someone from the Cable Advisory Committee to see if they may be able to join us for another meeting?
For Comcast.
For Comcast as well, but they may indeed have questions for these folks as well.
Yes, I can, I can request.
All right. All right. Is that a motion, Mr. Belvin?
That's my motion. We put off to the next meeting and give Comcast an opportunity to come in here and answer some questions. And as I said, it's their contract, too, so, and I want my board members to see it.
All right. Is there a second?
Okay, yes, since they said it's not unreasonable, I'll second it.
We have a motion, any second. Any further discussion?
You had mentioned, when one of them brought up the senior discount, you had said a 5% might happen, I forget the term you used. Is it possible, between now and the next meeting, to get that 5% discount for seniors added to this?
You may already, it's a 10%, the standard provision is 10% of basic service for seniors, for qualifying seniors. You may already have it. But the answer is, can we get it before the next meeting? I would ask Mike Gala, who's the Comcast representative, to give us the standard side letter. And he'll give it to us, because all you have to do is ask.
Great.
It may well be that your seniors are already getting that now. I don't know, but I'll ask. I'll find out.
Great.
Mr. Fennessy, could you reach out to Comcast and invite them to our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you for joining us, gentlemen.
I might add, just, Mike Gala is a challenge to pin down to a meeting, so that he might not be available for the next meeting, but we will get him in here as soon as we can.
Okay, yeah, well, obviously, that's, the board would like to speak to him, so if it's not the next meeting, it'll be whenever we can schedule it. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. And I'm sorry if I, how I sounded, if I was a little stern, but like I said, it's really, it's frustrating. And I know it's frustrating for you guys, too, dealing with contract negotiations, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Thank you. We appreciate all your hard work. All right. The next item on our agenda is the discussion and possible vote for a recommendation of the draft annual town meeting articles. I would recommend, since, for various reasons, we are short two members this evening, that we table this for a future meeting. Is there any opposition?
No.
Mr. Belvin?
That's fine.
I think any discussions we have, we're just going to have to have again
Yep.
At another meeting, so.
Right, right.
Do you need a motion for that? Or can we just?
Yeah, why don't we make a motion to table for a future meeting?
Then I'll make a motion that we table the discussion and possible vote for recommendation of draft annual town meeting articles until a future meeting, when the whole board can be here.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. And I would say, for the next item, probably the exact same thing is in order, unfortunately. I just, I don't see an alternative.
Okay.
All right. I will make a motion that we table the discussion and possible vote on the Town Administrator Bylaw for a future meeting, when the full board is here.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. We tried so hard to fill up this agenda to just take it away from future meetings, and we just can't do it. All right. The next item is our Town Administrator Update. Mr. Fennessy.
Okay, so the short meetings, you mean this is how it goes all the time?
Just remember, one meeting may be short, but that just means the next meeting is longer.
Twice as long, I know, I know. Okay, so I only have one on the Montello Street update. The traffic signals will be placed at the newly-created Montello Street entrance in Route 58. And I think you brought up a question about Silo Marketplace, and the entrance to Silo Marketplace will stay open. The road will be blocked at approximately 50 feet past the delivery entrance to the hardware store.
Okay.
Put your head to that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that's it.
And if I could just ask you for an update, hopefully, at the next meeting, I know we discussed this a little bit, but if you could just investigate the water situation that was brought up at our last meeting and get that, I think the board needs an update on that situation as well.
We're working on that.
I know, and I know it was a short turnaround time between meetings. I just wanted to make sure that sort of stayed on the, on our, on our agenda, that's all. So, thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Fennessy?
No, that's it.
All right. Moving right along. Minutes licenses topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair for 48 hours in advance of the meeting, there are none. Our next meeting is February 1, 2022, and we have the approval of the minutes of January 11, 2021.
Yes, question on that. Can we approve them? Because I believe they're January 11, 2022. So because the wrong date is on the agenda, can we approve that?
I think we can approve them. And that, I think reasonable people would anticipate that that was 2022. Mr. Fennessy, do you see any issue with that?
No, you can make an amendment to it.
Mr. Belvin? I hate to do this, but the other members, they may have changes or modifications on them, and I know they, I don't know if they submitted any in already.
They did not. All the minutes are in their packet, and what I would suggest is, we can approve these minutes, and if they have suggestions, they can bring those up at the next meeting, and we can, we can make an amended.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of 1:11:22.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Select Board notes, we have none. Select Board Community Announcements?
I have none.
Okay.
I just want to make sure everyone stays warm with all these cold days and be careful of all the ice buildup, because slipping falls are starting to happen, and you don't want to go to the hospital.
I agree with that. I have a couple of quick announcements. First of all, I just want to congratulate Gatra Driver Ron Siminski. He's retiring this week. He after serving Gatra for 12 years, so congratulations, Mr. Siminski. And also, if anyone out there is interested, starting tomorrow, the government is shipping free COVID tests to each household. You can get that COVID test by just filling out a quick form at covidtest.gov. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Good night, everybody.